Listen, we're still in the, um, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this other issue that just happened at, at another time, but right now, we're still in a public hearing for the, um, for the citizen petition to change the, um, the format to appoint the FinCom members. Is there any other discussion on that? Aside from letting it happen on town floor, um, Tim, you had your hand up?
Uh, sorry, I forgot.
It's okay.
Um, but Linda has her hand up.
Yeah.
And she is unmuted.
Okay, Linda?
Hi, thanks. Um, I think these are all really interesting um, things that we need to vote on and town meeting floor. We have some good insight into what, what the petitioners would like. And now I think we should move on and go to town meeting, think about it, our individual selves, think about how it can impact us and the whole town and vote. And just move on.
I agree. How, Dave, did you had your hand up and can we unmute? Okay, Dave.
Yeah, okay, um, well, I just want to be clear. So, so as Tom's saying, I'm the chairman of the Board of Assessors right now. So would I be eligible to get on the Finance Committee or that would be a no?
That would be a no.
But, so the, the new law would still wouldn't allow me to be on the Finance Board?
Let me put it, let me put it, and I'm not throwing stones at anybody. I was very careful about it. The policy that has been put into place is if you want to be on the Finance Committee, you'd have to get off every committee you're on. Unless, um, the Capital Improvement Committee, because that's, that's it's requested that somebody from the Finance Committee be on there.
Tom, you're talking, Tom, you're talking how it is presently.
Presently.
I think the question from, uh, Dave was, if I understood, the new policy, would somebody from the Assessors Office potentially be able to be on the Finance Committee?
Correct.
The new policy, the way it's written is all you have to be on the Finance Committee is a voter.
Okay.
Is that now?
Okay, so that means that he could, as an assessor, still be on the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how it really works is like, anybody else that's on a committee, Dave would say, when it came to his budget, I abstain.
I, I didn't.
Correct. When it comes to my budget, there's no way that I can influence the Finance Board or change people's assessors, assessing of their property. I think Tim Haley kinda implied that a little bit, but there's no way that I could do that.
Dave, you guys do have a budget of.
Yes, 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 we do.
That's, yeah.
And I would abstain from that.
Right.
Okay, that, that was, that was good conversation. Anything, uh, Ruth, you're important because you're on the FinCom, so let's hear from her.
Can we unmute?
Is she ready to talk or then we'll do Ruth?
That's fine, Kim?
Uh, yeah, I was, um, I, I'm thinking, I, I have to say I agree with Tim as far as the appointing of the Finance Committee. I think there needs to be a separation between the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Um, and anybody who is appointed, even if they're an employee of the town, do have to realize they have to abstain from any conversation about their budget. And I would think that'd be the only limiting thing there, as long as you're not on as many people as so many committees that they might not be effective. That's all.
Okay, Ruth?
You know, i- it's really interesting that we talk about the qualifications of being on the Finance Committee when in fact, for two years, we've been two members short. So to all you, I don't know, thirty people out there listening, Finance Committee has two open spots on Finance Committee. Alls you gotta do is write a letter of interest to the moderator.
Good point.
You know, and, and we'll wait and see how it goes at town meeting as far as doing any changes or not changes.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Everybody has a right to go to town meeting and vote, right?
Yep.
It's a place to do it. Okay, so I am gonna need some help with the next part, Gare. Um, there was a third part to this, um, public hearing.
Moderator qualifications.
Can anybody speak on that?
Tim can, he was a moderator.
Let's, uh, I wanna listen to, um, Karen has her hand up?
Unmuted, Ken, yeah.
I'm the one that brought this one forward.
Okay.
I don't know how, just started it. Um, I'm more or less brought it forward because I thought it was an important thing to protect the town and have some clarity and transparency. Um, the moderator appoints the Finance Committee. The moderator happened to be our C A O the past few years and bringing forth the budget of the town and the warrant and everything that the town was going to be looking at and voting on. Not trying to say that the person did anything wrong or whatever. It is not a good, it is not ethically right. If you really look at it hard, it's not ethically right to have a moderator appoint to FinCom, be working on the selectman's budget and the warrant and have some leverage and authority over the Select Board and the Finance Committee. So that's why I brought this forward. We did come up with a, um, Mass General Law and we brought it to the, um, Town Council last year at one of our meetings. I think it was a special town meeting. Um, the town has not adopted this um, Mass General Law, which is a section twenty-three A, I think it is of the, um, chapter forty-one. Uh, in it, in the middle, it, it, it gives the town authority to hire somebody and appoint them as an Executive Secretary or a Town Administrator. It does not use the word C A O or any other type of, um, what was title, okay? And so if the town adopted this, it gives the Select Board the authority after we voted on town meeting floor to appoint a person to be Executive Secretary or Town Administrator. Under the provisions of this section, they would be swell, sworn in to their faithful duties and during the time that he holds that office, the Select Board's office, he shall held no other elected town office. So if somebody truly was a Town Administrator or an Executive Secretary to the Select Board, they can hold no other town office. Elected town office, meaning they couldn't be the moderator, okay? Now, when we brought this to Town Council and they reviewed it with us, it came back that Kevin Flynn was a C A O and it didn't follow underneath these guidelines of this Mass General Law, which we haven't voted into place anyway. So it more or less got left that he could hold off all of the positions that have to do with everything with the town. So I did not want to bring forth this section because I, as a person, not a town clerk, I did not really want to bring forth this Mass General Law because I didn't want to give the Select Board the authority to start hiring a Town Administrator or an Executive Secretary. That's your business. That's something that'll have to be decided by your board if you want to do that and bring that forth. The only reason I'm reading this is because there is a Mass General Law that states that that person will not hold any other elected town office. So I couldn't go that route, so I went the route of adding this section in about the moderator stating that the moderator would not hold any other elected or appointed position and have direct access with the town budget. And this is all just from my point of view as a person that works not as town clerk, but somebody that knows a lot about how the town government works, that um, not just Kevin Flynn or the next C A O or the next town moderator, you know, whoever it is, should not be able to do this. And that's why I brought it forward.
Okay, point, point well taken. Um, Ruth?
Okay, and, and I was gonna say, because Karen did get a little, she got that all in. And basically, it's because, you know, it depends on his title whether or not he's actually eligible to be moderator according to that Mass General Law. So, you know, I, I agree that the moderator should not have, you know, decision-making powers. You know, especially if the moderator is supposed to be totally one hundred percent impartial. You know, the moderator appoints the Finance Committee but can't tell the Finance Committee how they can be run.
Uh, point well taken.
Um, Paul Veloy's had his hand up. Uh, he put it back down, I asked him.
Where is he?
I'm right here.
Okay.
I'm right, right, yeah. Uh, both Ruth and Karen hold some very valid points. The moderator is a position that cannot hold any other position. It's a huge conflict of interest when the moderator can also put budgets together and everything else. It's really against general law for Massachusetts. It just doesn't make sense.
Apparently, the opinion is, is universal on, on that, and I can kinda see, uh, I can understand. I can understand that because there is no separation at that point, but, um, that's something else that'll go to the voters and people need to go to town meeting and we'll decide on it. So, any other discussion on, on that article before we, uh, wrap up the public hearing? Okay, let's get done with the public hearing. Um, Gare, do you have anything ahead?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna move that we close the public hearings for the three, um, citizen petition articles and send them to town meeting for the, uh, for the people to vote on.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're closing the public hearing at eight twenty-four?
Yep.
I made a motion, you seconded it. You, you gotta do a vote, roll call?
Fan dryer, aye.
Well, when I, so voted now. Let's see some of these other things. We're gonna, we're gonna have to like, get organized a little bit here, Gare, because this is, uh, gonna throw a curveball tonight.
Okay, so I say we skip B, the B O S Office Assistant.
Okay.
I say we skip C, the, uh, Next Office Assistant.
Okay.
Uh, website email issues. Um, I have a question for Linda and anybody else that can answer. Uh, apparently somehow we don't have enough email addresses. Uh, what can we do to alleviate that?
You need to find out who your, um, webmaster is for your company, your internet company. Ask him how.
Tech one.
Tech one, call tech. Just ask them how you add extra email addresses to your system and add them on there.
Okay, so I already did that. And I, I was told that, uh, um, that all we have to do is purchase another block of email addresses.
Yep. How, what is, what is the range he gave you?
He did give me a range, but he said that's all you had to do and it wasn't very expensive.
Listen.
So, so that's all we have to do is to get more email addresses. Uh, so instead of deleting some, we can just purchase a small block, so, um, uh, who wants to pursue, who can we ask to pursue that, uh, to have an, a, uh, a good answer for us for the next meeting? Anyone volunteer?
Is your tech person still employed?
Well, our, um, huh, I don't know.
Um, we don't believe so.
I got a, um, hand up. Leon would like to be able to talk a little bit.
Let's listen to Leon.
Hi, Garehart. Um, Tim asked me to, to see if I could talk a little bit, uh, of the issues that were going on. Uh, I'm actually, my current employment, I'm a C I O for a major corporation and I, I deal in I T every day. And I did speak with, uh, Kevin yesterday about some of the different issues and it seems like the town's in the middle of a transition between their current Gmail solution and an Office three sixty-five client. They're paying for both. And I think that someone, um, needs to complete that transition to the Office three sixty-five client. I, I had asked Kevin to provide me with, um, Madman Access so I could do a little research and maybe some contract information. Um, you, you're right. I think a quick solution is you could just add some addresses to the current one and get some people some email. But you, you're currently buying Gmail and Office three sixty-five for each employee or each laptop. And, um, you should consolidate, in the end, you want to consolidate into one solution. I've, I've offered to help get that transition done. And I had asked Kevin to, uh, he was gonna get back to me with that information.
Okay, so that sounds good. So then, um, if you can continue coming to the meetings and keep us, uh, uh, updated on that, that'd be great.
Will do.
We, we may be calling him if, if we need him sooner than the meeting for some, uh, some technical advice on this.
That's fine, yep.
That, okay, please, uh, we need to get your, uh, contact information at some point.
Yep.
Gare, we have his contact information already.
Oh, you do? I, I don't have it, okay.
Okay, well, uh, we, we can get it to you too, but, um, I had spoken to him earlier and, and sent a stuff to, to Kevin a few weeks ago and I guess recently, um, I followed up with Kevin and he, uh, he must have made contact with Leon and brought him, gave him some information anyway. But we, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, good.
The, um, so, is Rick in? Yeah, Rick Tenny?
Yeah, uh, Ruth had her hand up and then Rick and then Dave Manti, so Ruth's all unmuted.
Okay, Ruth?
Well, yeah, I do have, I mean, right now Gmail's working fine, um, for the Board of Health. Um, and I do not know, does Office three sixty-five work with Windows seven? Because that's all the Board of Health's computer has. So are you gonna, you know, fix something for the majority and all of a sudden the rest of us are left out in the cold? Because I don't have Office three sixty-five. And, you know, back at the end of January, um, I mentioned to Mr. Flynn that the Board of Health needed to update their computer. He said, we'll get right on it. Haven't heard anything since. So, gotta make sure that, before you switch over to Office three sixty-five, make sure that everybody that needs the access to email is gonna be able to a, access it.
Yeah, and right now, Ruth, I'm just investigating for the selectmen's request and, and that's a very good specific issue. You'd be limited to webmail base only with Windows seven with the current Office three sixty-five environment. But those are things we definitely have to look at before you do a full conversion, yep.
Okay, yeah. Because, and the other thing is, now, it started, granted, the Finance Committee, we used to have an email address. But because that password was with the old Finance Committee co-chair, apparently we couldn't just recreate the account or change the password or, you know, I don't know. I mean, I get a feeling we probably, because I, I heard there was fifty, I, I heard Gmail, you had fifty email accounts.
Yeah, with the Google Suite, there's a block of fifty that comes with it. So that someone purchased that and that's what they're paying for. And you can up and, up it. Somebody is the administrator for that.
I'd, I'd really like to know how many of those are invalid accounts.
Yeah.
Because there's no way that we're using fifty of them.
Yeah. So that's the access I asked Kevin to get me and I can get you all, I can get the selectmen all that information and anyone that needs to know.
Oh, okay, because, you know, why, why change it if it's really not broken? Why not fix it?
Yep.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Let's, let's see like what's, what's going on here tomorrow. Uh, we might have a better idea.
Right. Uh, Rick Tenny has his hand up and he's ready to go.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, Gmail at the highway has worked perfectly fine. Since I've been there, I've never ever had a problem. Uh, that was the first thing I heard was, uh, last week. And I can tell you, uh, a year or two ago, and I don't, I'm not too computer savvy, but, uh, when I got the computer, I got handed a list of all new emails and it wasn't highway@philipston-ma.gov. It was rick@philipstonhighway something, something, something. And for the longest time, I was sending emails, uh, to other people in town and they would never respond and, and come to find out, our previous I T person never set up any of those accounts, so they weren't turned on. I don't know if that's the three sixty-five that's being talked about here, uh, but I was told it was gonna be way better. It was the new and improved thing and it just never got set up, uh, and that was some time ago, so. Uh, but my email works fine. I agree with Ruth. There's probably twenty-five unused emails or, or, or dead emails out there that can be opened up and we may be spending money for nothing. So I think it would be good if the, so, if the selectmen tried to jump on board with this, if they can get the information to Leon and get this straightened out, because I think there's a possibility we don't have a problem at all.
That, that could be. Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, why is there a mixed bag of Gmail and Office three sixty-five? I know somebody that works for the town of Greenfield. They have a lot more email accounts than Phillips and has. They use Gmail flawlessly, works great. There's no issues with it. And I believe Office three sixty-five will cost us more money in the long run per user. So I don't understand why we can't just stick with Gmail. We're not that big of a town. Greenfield is what, five, ten times the size of Phillips and? No issues. Other companies use Gmail, no issues. We just gotta get it straightened out. Find the, find the Gmail accounts that are invalid, delete them. Maybe we don't have to buy more, more accounts, uh, more email addresses.
We, we're gonna work on that and get some professional, um, people in here to give us the, uh, the answers that we need to find that.
Gmail's the way to go. That's all I'm saying. It's free.
Okay, Linda?
Um, I heard that, um, yeah, Michael, that seven is obsolete, that they don't do support for that? No support and, uh, three, three sixty-five, what? What about it? Um, and it won't run three sixty-five?
Yeah, that's true. And the worst thing about Windows seven is you do not get any security updates from Microsoft anymore, so you're actually putting yourself at risk for many viruses.
Yeah, but, Lea, couldn't we just update the, uh, the Windows?
We, we gotta see what the P C's capable of doing, but I, I'll come in and, and assess that for you.
Okay, and, and I think that's, we can talk all night about this, but unless we get somebody, yeah, that knows, you know what I mean, and, and once you see and understand it, then you can give us some better advice.
Yeah, and me and my team, we support twenty-seven thousand users, so we're, we gotta go to handle on this, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And we're gonna be, we're gonna be talking to you.
Yeah, and, and just one, just to finish one point, it, most of the town has already bought Office three sixty-five. You're using it your Outlook client, your Word, your PowerPoint, your Excel, that's all part of it. So you just gotta make sure, you know, you make, you get, you make the best of it. Gmail is great, but.
Gmail's great.
Yep, we'll figure it out.
Gmail's what we're using.
Okay, Tom?
I just wanted to say that, uh, I agree. I don't think we should be spending more money if it, if it's a matter of, uh, buying a block of whatever it is, virgin Gmail, uh, addresses, then let's do it. Uh, let's not spend a lot of money on other things and, you know, get this all straightened out. And then maybe down the road, a year from now, start thinking if we want to get into another system. Um, and it surprises me, I thought it was just a matter of calling someone up and, uh, making some comments. And there was some really good comments tonight, you know, let's see if we're using them all. Let's see if there's one sitting there blank, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, we'll follow up on that. Uh, that's gonna take some time. Uh, Rick, one more time.
Yeah, I, I just want to add one thing, uh, and I know you guys want to move along, uh, with it. It seems like in the past six, seven months, we've had a lot of people resign. Can somebody, uh, in the selectmen's office try to make sure that we have all of the current passwords, the administrative passwords and all of these things that we need to get into these certain accounts? So that if, uh, certain people resigned, that we're not left high and dry and nobody knows how to get in, uh, for software updates or anything like that, administrative people. I think we really need to, it, it goes back to one person being in charge. If, if there's a set of passwords on all of the town computers, two people should have all of those passwords. You know, whether it's a selectman and a C A O or a town administrator, if one person has all those passwords, we're, 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 uh, be polite, we're, we're in a pickle. So that's all I wanted to say. Something to think about.
Agreed. Let's move on to some other things, Gare.
Okay, uh, let's, um, award town hall painting bid. I don't have any information on that.
Okay, so he, he forwarded us, um, a, a bunch of documents this afternoon where I say he, Kevin. Uh, and I didn't have a lot of time to go over them, but there's some pretty high bids for painting the town hall that we received, so I'm thinking at this point, um, and I'll just give you an idea. One of them was forty-eight thousand, another one was twenty-eight thousand, twenty-five thousand and sixty-four thousand. There was four different votes, uh, excuse me, four different bids. Um, I, I, I think like we should digest this a little bit and, um, and we'll move this to the next meeting.
Okay.
The, and I wanted to ask, what about this? It says award Queen Lake Road project, um. Is that something that we, we need to do or is it already done? Rick Tenny, please?
He wandered away from his computer, uh, all as we see is his ceiling.
He wandered away from his computer.
Oh, there he is.
He's back, he's back.
Karen had her hand up.
Sorry about that. I, I had to use the little boy's room. Uh, what did, what did I miss and what was the question?
Well, there's something on the agenda saying to award Queen Lake Road project.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I haven't got confirmation from the engineer yet, uh, that, that is actually ready to be awarded to anybody. Um, I know that, uh, the engineer company vetted out all of the information and the low bidder, uh, is a good qualified mass D O T, uh, person for the bridge. Uh, but they have not awarded it officially to, uh, that contractor yet, so I don't think that's, uh, necessarily ready to be voted on just yet because it's not officially given to the contractor.
Okay, so can we hold off on that, Gare? Do you agree with that till next meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine.
If, if something comes up that we, we have a situation that we have to act on these, we'll call a meeting, um, you know, before the next scheduled one.
Okay.
Don, uh, Smith had some, is he still here?
Uh, Karen had, had her hand up.
Oh, yeah, Karen, there.
I just wanted to let you know that it was, um, we voted for, I think it was forty thousand dollars already not saying that the bids, you should accept the bids, I'm just letting you know that I believe there's already forty thousand dollars on the books for the painting.
For the painting, okay. So there was some quotes for some replacement, uh, to, 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 replacement generators for town hall? Is Don still in the meeting?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah, okay, Don.
Okay, um, back at the last storm, we had a issue with the generator that acts up the, uh, town hall. And now, um, it has failed. And the one at the town hall is important because it runs the radio system. And the town hall, obviously. But it runs the whole radio system for all of E M S, police, the highway, everything. Um, I asked if I could help out and, um, Rick Tenny gave me five, uh, companies and I gave them a call today. And of the five, three of them don't work this area.
And of the five, three of them don't work this area. I have one out of Attleboro that's going to give me a call and come out and give us an estimate. And there's one other one I haven't heard back yet from Millbury. I was also asked by, uh, to look into replacing the, uh, to get an estimate for replacing the generator down at the highway line and possibly at the police station. And I've talked with both, um, Rick Tenny and the Chief of Police. And the Chief of Police, his runs fine, it just may need to be maintained, have some maintenance done on it. And he feels that it's fine. Rick feels that he can get away with a smaller generator than what he has now. So until I get someone out here, I'll get all the estimates for replacement, repairs, scaling down, upgrading, whatever. And I'm gonna try to get ahold of a couple of more companies.
Okay, so we're not, we're not, we're not ready to vote on anything tonight?
No, 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 I'm just giving everybody an update on what was going on with the generators. I just took this over this week.
Yep.
I'm researching this. Generator behind the Town Hall is priority. It really needs to be replaced. So whether, you know, how we work this, once I get more information, I will come back to you with all the information. Just, like I said, I just took this on this week and I just.
That's fine. That's fine. Keep working on it. I'm just going through the agenda that Kevin sent us and it says to vote on this tonight, and obviously we're not ready to vote.
No.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the, to the next item, the office relocations. We should hold on that, Gary?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah.
Um, library roof repairs. We don't have all the information we need. I know Dan said that the library has enough funds to cover it, but we don't have the an accurate amount. There was a question about if it's fifty-two hundred dollars or if it's gonna be eight thousand dollars, something to do with prevailing wages. So, so we need to get that clarified first, and I don't know if Kevin had got anywhere. He was supposed to be researching that. So can we hold on that?
Okay.
Same, same thing with the images.
Can I just say, I think on, on both of those, we got quotes on both of those. What, is there any way that we can ask them to give us a firm bid? Uh, since we're interested, uh, my understanding is if anything under ten thousand, uh, we can do it for an emergency, and this is an emergency, because for both the library and the annex, it's gonna get quite expensive if we get another good windstorm here with some water on it. So this is quite a bit of an emergency to get these fixed. And since our bids are under ten grand, uh, and it's an emergency, I think we can get these fixed right away. What do you think on that?
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think we need to have an accurate number. It's not gonna be fifty-two hundred dollars if they need to do the prevailing wage. So we need to make sure that we're within the, um, the confines of the law that requires them to do what they need to do for under ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and can you have them look into that and give us a firm estimate then, or shall we?
I can, and I thought that was gonna happen today. I had talked to, um, I had talked to Kevin in the last couple of days. He was working on this and obviously we, um, we took a hit across the bow tonight. I don't have that information, so.
Okay.
Karen, can we, can we listen?
I just want to say that, um, the work, the work at the police station that was done last year, um, that was all done by Chartier, who already gave you one bid, I believe. Um, so I don't know how they worked around that. I know that that was an article on Town Meeting Board that was passed. And then I think Chartier had to give a bid and there was a couple of bids maybe, and they were the lowest and they got the work at the, um, police station. That's all. I just wanted to give you that info.
Yeah, that, that's fine, and we'll, you know, we're happy with the contractor that gave the bid. It's just that we're trying to make sure that we're not doing something that someone's gonna come back and say, uh, you didn't follow the right process.
I think as long as you get three bids, and even if you don't get three bids, if there's a time put out and you don't get three bids, then it doesn't mean that you can't move forward. It just means that nobody else responded and you can pick the one that did it.
Right.
Place the bid.
Okay, so some of this is, some of this is, we have to refresh our memories, because I haven't done awarded bids for quite some time and they've changed over the, uh, the last five, six years, so.
Rick Tenny should talk.
Rick has his hand up.
Yeah, I might be able to help you a little bit. I know you'd have to try to get three bids and at least if you got two bids and you made an attempt for a third and they didn't return your call, as long as you've made three valid attempts to get a bid, it counts as a bid. Uh, and as far as prevailing wage goes, any, any public, um, work has to be paid prevailing wage. That is up to the employer. Uh, whether they bid two thousand or four thousand or eight thousand, it's up to him to pay prevailing wage. Um, and if I recall with the police department, I thought that they gave a bid and they did make an adjustment to the bid so that they could pay the additional funds to the employees for prevailing wage. Um, if you don't get anywhere in a short period of time, I can reach out to chatter and/or I'm sure Chief Dodge can reach out to Chartier, because he's had a pretty good connection with them when they did the police station. And try to get something resolved, so you guys can try to move forward.
Well, that would be helpful. Again, what I don't, I, I don't want to, I don't want to hold somebody to, to, um, to a bid when they, when they told us that this is not considering prevailing wages. So, you know, it sounds, it sounds like a really great deal, but we need to follow the law. If the law says we need to pay, then, and I, and I don't want to, um, the contractor, you know what I mean? If he's, you know, and I want him to adjust his bid accordingly, so that he can pay his people the right, the right amounts.
I'll try to research it again to see if there's a dollar amount. And the only thing that I ever remember, I think I've mentioned it before, is if you were an owner-operator, uh, you didn't have to pay yourself prevailing wage, it was now a moot point. Uh, I will reach out to them and see if they understand that is prevailing wage. I think it would be good to be by email, and if they have to adjust.
That's, that's good. If you could do that, Rick, that would be great and, and it's not that we're gonna throw them out. We want to make sure that. Yeah.
I'd rather make sure they do it the right way, because they, they could get audited and they would have to turn around and pay them anyway, so.
Well, we might, you know, if they're good contractors, we might want to have them do other work too, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, um, Gary, you want to move on?
Yeah, um, Selectmen's Office wall, uh, that is pretty messed up. I'm looking at a quote online here, uh, I think we need to minimize what's gonna be done there. It looks like he's, um, looking for, uh, far more than, uh, we need right now. So, um, you want to put that outside?
Yeah, have they, have they already started this work or?
Yes. Well, well, what happened was that before, when, um, the, um, C A O thought that the tax collector and the treasurer are gonna become one, he had decided it would be a good idea to move that person into the room next to him and take over that downstairs, um, meeting room. But he took that over because the elevator was put in. But anyways, uh, in the process, a wall was put up. Um, it was never finished. Uh, he asked me several times if I could wire it for him and fix some things up, but it's rather extensive work and the wall is not finished and I have to run wires through the wall. So until that wall is finished, it's kind of hard to run wires through it. Um, I, I don't really trust somebody to be, uh, notching studs in order for me to run my wire and have them notch the wood out. It just doesn't work out right. So it's incomplete. And, uh, we need to decide what we're gonna do with that room anyways. If we're gonna move Kevin, uh, over to the, uh, school, uh, what are we gonna, we're gonna figure out how we're gonna break up those rooms and how we're gonna make a place for people to talk and, uh, and go up to a window? We have to figure that out first. Uh, I don't think there's a written plan anywhere in regards to how that layout is.
You're a little bit more rough, you're a little bit more rough than me. I don't even know, I don't even know if we, uh, have to have somebody to move over there after the earlier episode tonight, um. But anyway, it says eleven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for that project.
That was one, yeah.
So I'm, I'm a little bit like, I'm looking at it and it also has something on there for the fire station, if I understood this correctly. It says, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars? Did you see that?
I know a little bit about that, if you guys want a little insight, if you're.
Okay.
Um, as far as the wall in the Selectmen's Office, there was a set of architectural plans drawn when they did the elevator project.
Okay.
They are somewhere, um, I'm not sure if I've got a copy, if I've seen a copy, but there is a set somewhere. As far as the fire department, uh, they wanted, with the COVID thing, they want to put up a, uh, like a separate entry wall uh, to, to separate people from just walking into the fire station, so they can deal with, you know, people that come in with questions. Uh, so that's what, that's what the quote is for the, uh, fire station, to put up a dividing wall. So it's kind of like a foyer. You're gonna walk in the main door and then there's gonna be a secondary door with a window, so that's what that's for.
But why is that on this one here for the Town Hall?
That was my question.
I don't know why we slipped them both together. I know that the fire department, uh, it was gonna get, tried to get, I think, put in for COVID. And I'm not sure if that's why they're put together, because they wanted it to try to be put on a COVID bill. I'm not sure what the end game was, but I know that was the reason the fire department was gonna have it uh, for COVID reasons and separation from the public to the fire department.
Okay, my, my question, I guess, would be if it's under ten thousand dollars, the rules are different than if it's over?
I, I believe so, yes.
So when they added the twenty-seven hundred dollars to this, they brought it to eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty, which means it should go out to bid, um, in a, in a different format.
I think, yeah, I think if they're gonna be put on the same thing, I think that could create a problem where if they were put through separately, it's two separate jobs, it's two separate.
Exactly, that was my thinking, especially since it's two separate buildings.
Yep, right.
So I think we need some clarification on this, um, on that. We can't really vote on that as it is.
Correct.
So that's the fire department entry?
Uh, yes, it's, it's, you're gonna walk in, it's gonna make it like it's a foyer. You're gonna walk in, there'll be another door.
No, I just, I'm just trying to make sure the things that we're holding, so we can get them on another meeting. Get it clarified. Now, now, keep in mind, I, I don't know if Gary's seen these things, but we don't get these things so, like typically in the afternoon, like this afternoon for this meeting. So I'm trying to download, print the things out. We had an earlier meeting and then there's not enough time.
You guys should have this a day or two ago, so you have time.
It would have been nice, it would have been nice if we had it like Monday, so we could like.
And digest it.
Have some conversation about, okay. Annual Town Meeting.
Uh, Linda had her hand up. I don't know if, um,
Do have to help us, because you're the host.
Yeah. I asked her to unmute. I don't know.
Where is she? Does she want to speak?
Maybe not.
Linda? She's got her hand up again.
I'm asking her to unmute.
Okay, I'm just gonna say something while she's doing that, Bernie.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's another, uh, thing on that thing, ESTO seven seven nine that deals just with the fire department. And that doesn't even talk about what is on that other bid. And that other one comes to a total of ten thousand five hundred. Did you find it?
No, um, help me out with that.
Okay.
Oh, I got it, I got it. This, this is a different company. This isn't, um, this is, this is a company out of Leamster.
Right, but this one here says Phillipson Fire Department.
Yeah, so I think Rick might have had something, um.
I know, I know Looking, Looking Glass is the company that put the quote in for the fire department. Out of Leamster.
Yeah. And that one's ten thousand five hundred thirteen, so we have the same problem. It's over ten.
Yep.
So we have another one to do some work at Town Hall, but it, and it makes mention of a fire station entry door and wall.
Right.
Remove fixed panel glass and install sliding glass service window.
Yeah. I think that, yeah, I think there's a couple of things going on there, turned into not just adding a second wall and a second entry, the, the, um, the original main door that you walk in from the outside, I think, was out of, um, regulations, so they would have to change that, so that it had a different type of door handle on it, and I think the door's rotted. So they were trying to roll everything all into one. Might as well replace that main entry, the main door and the interior.
Okay, we're gonna hold off on this, because we, we need to get educated and.
I do know that they tried to get another bid on that. I don't know if they tried to get three bids total. It's possible they got three, but you'd need clarification from, uh, I'm not sure if Chief Pack is still on.
I, I didn't, I didn't see him.
He was on earlier.
He was.
I guess we'll talk until the next meeting.
Yeah, let's put it, we're gonna have to put it off, because it's over ten thousand anyway. We're gonna get some answers, like how to deal with that. Any.
Linda finally, they're unmuted.
Ditchy, okay.
Yeah, it finally worked. Sorry. Um, yeah, the, um, the door in the separation thing at the firehouse, that definitely could go under the COVID. So put a little star next to that for COVID money.
Okay. I put a little star next to my notes. Annual Town Meeting warrant closing date. We need to vote on a date to close the warrant. Wednesday, annual town meeting is May fifth. Is that correct, Karen?
Yes, it is. And the warrant has to be posted seven days before that. So that would be the Wednesday before that, and I don't have a calendar in front of me to know. Obviously, it's a date in April.
April twenty-eighth.
And that is the last possible date that the warrant has to be hung and posted. So you go from there and decide when you want to close, you know, you gotta close the warrant.
So how do we, how do we prepare the budget? Is that something the finance committee?
Does the twenty-first give us enough time, Karen?
Yeah, you've got to post by the twenty-eighth. I would think if you closed on the twenty-first, you just gotta review everything and, and you know, you have enough time for Town Council to look at your warrant. Make sure that it's typed up correctly before you go to post it before the twenty-eighth. And you also have to vote on it. So you're gonna have to take another vote, so I don't know how your meetings fall or if you'll have to schedule an extra meeting, Bernie.
Well, we meet on the twenty-first, so we could, we, we could vote on it, um, unless you want to have a meeting earlier, Gary, and vote on it even earlier, but the FinCon still needs to um, have some time to get their numbers together, right?
Tom?
Tom, when do you think you'll have all your stuff together?
Well, we still haven't gotten a budget from the Selectmen. Um, I don't know, we've got a meeting, um, the eighth and our next meeting is the twenty-second, because there are a couple of people that were gonna be away. So I suppose if we hustle, we could get, uh, we could get a budget. Ruth, what do you think? Tim?
Okay, um, like our meeting on the twenty-second should be to.
Like, our meeting on the twenty second should be to, the budget should. Yeah, the warrant should already be. Prepared. In its entirety, so that on the twenty second, we can make our recommendations.
Okay.
I mean, that kind of gives us, you know, tomorrow to pretty much finalize everything. And then, you know, if there's some tweaking on the twenty second, if we don't meet the fifteenth. You know, it is, it is moving in really fast. But definitely at least close it by the twenty first, because you gotta have it posted by the twenty eighth.
Well, that's what I'm concerned with. The twenty first, you think we have enough time?
You might actually want to do it earlier than that.
That's what I'm wondering.
Closing the warrant means that nothing else will get added to the warrant.
Right.
So you close the warrant, you know, you get your draft warrant. Next week or, you know, ten days from now and say. Okay, you approve all the warrants, or you say, don't take that off, or whatever. And then you close the warrant, get it to the attorney. Because he's gonna make sure all the wording's correct.
Yeah.
And then you get it back and then you can post the warrant. It's, you know.
Can we add our figures after the warrant's been posted, or do the figures have to go with the warrant?
No, our recommendation figures are not necessarily the warrant figures.
Okay.
You know, where somebody. You know, go back to, I hate the way the warrant gets posted now, to be perfectly honest. I think the warrant should have. The the figures that were requested for this year. And if the finance committee recommends something different, then that's in our recommendations. You know, you don't have to wait for our recommendations to post the warrant.
How far off do you think? You are from having those numbers, because I don't have a problem putting the numbers in there that. You're kind of like working with, and then if we have to tweak them on town floor, that's fine.
Yep. Well, I think a part of the problem is we were still waiting for some numbers.
Yeah.
I did email Tim tonight for the. Income portion of it. So that our incomes will be correct, and then we gotta look at. And the problem is we've got two different columns. I was looking at them yesterday and today. You know, with with what we think everybody asked for. What we're assuming our recommendation's gonna be, but we left out some holes. So one sheet says we're in the red, one sheet says we're in the black, so. Even myself, I was having a hard time following our worksheet.
Okay.
So hopefully it can be straightened out so that when we look at it tomorrow night. Both of those two columns will have the same figure, or at least have to not have missing figures.
And I can speak to that. The spreadsheet, I was kind of questioning where some of the numbers came from. And so now I've got a little bit better clarification on what numbers get put where, so. It'll straighten it out a lot.
Yeah, and that's all. As long as, as long as those two columns that we're looking at for fiscal year twenty two. They each have numbers in them, because some of them don't have numbers. Carried over for like some of the expenses.
Okay, so you think, you think by tomorrow you could have a whole bunch of that stuff so that we can get the draft over to the lawyers?
Well, no. Our recommendations, our worksheet that we're working on is based on what people give us. We do not create the warrant. The warrant and all the wording for the warrant is created by the CAO. For the selectman's office, let's put it that way.
So what if after tomorrow night, we have a workable spreadsheet? Sort of. Could we then forward it to Gare and Bernie? And then that could be utilized with the warrant. And then when we make our recommendations, we could make changes then, or we could even make changes. You know, we could question something and make a change on the town floor, right?
Correct. Yeah, you can make changes on the town floor. I'm just looking at the possibility of what happens if we don't get any cooperation out of our. Our CAO's office going forward. I just, we just have to watch out about that as well.
That's correct.
And we have to be mindful and all that work together to make this happen in the. In a timely fashion for town meeting, so that was my reasoning. I'd rather be. Ahead of the game a little bit in case we have to. Pick up some missing pieces and get all the stuff together, so.
Well, you know, Bernie, I'm confident that a bunch of folks would get together and make it happen. One way or another. They'd make it happen, folks in the town hall, you know. Whatever we could contribute as a finance committee, and of course, I'm talking personally. You know, one way or another, we'd make it happen.
Okay, so if we go, if we use the twenty first as a date to close the warrant, we can have everything still compiled before that instead of putting ourselves. In a jam like trying to do it a week ahead of time, and then we can't. You know what I mean?
That's correct.
So why don't we do that? Again. I'm gonna make a motion to close the warrant on April twenty first.
I'll second that.
Okay, do a roll call vote?
Fan dryer, right?
No, and I, so will be. To discuss and delegate responsibilities for preparing a budget, why? We're gonna figure this one out. Elementary school update. Anything else? Anybody have any questions or anything like?
I think, I think the, Tom Douse should speak in terms of the memorial school. But again, personally, as a concerned citizen, I'd still like to know the status of the phone, the internet, the wifi, the alarm, etc., etc. As I have voiced before. But I think Tom can give you an update. That committee is moving really hot.
Okay, I want to listen to Tom, but first Ruth had her hand up again.
Okay, well, I only put my name up because you asked if there was anything else, so before you, before you close the meeting.
Yeah.
I had something for before you close the meeting.
Okay, Karen, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify with your last conversation. I think Gare Hart was more or less looking at. We all know, Bernie, the select board is responsible for bringing forth the warrant. Now, if you need help with that, obviously, we'll pitch in if there's a problem with that. I think Gare Hart was more or less looking at, he would like to see some of the figures that the finance committee is kind of putting forth. Not that the finance committee is telling the select board what to do.
I completely understand. I'm fine with that, and in all the help that we can get right now, we may need, so. Okay, so Tom, are you still with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right here. Just real quick, we got another meeting tomorrow night with the. Education option committee. We've got a small subcommittee. We're putting together a survey to get it out to the townsfolk to see if they actually have an interest in. Having PMS back open with kids in there, because we don't want to be doing all this work and. You know, we find out that the townsfolk don't want that to actually happen. So we've actually had some conversation with other communities out there. The chair. Is here tonight, Rich Deegan, but I think he's doing dual things. He's watching another meeting or taking. He's working in another meeting, so if he was on, I would have him give you this update. So we're. We're talking to these other communities and we're looking to have a Zoom meeting with them sometime in the middle of the month. And then we sent a letter to you folks requesting. This school be taken care of in regards to. The minor. Repairs and fixes and that be put on the warrant. And then there's a couple of other small things, but we are, we are moving pretty steady. We've got a good group of people and very committed and hardworking. And we want to, we want to make sure that we come up with a good plan for you folks. So that we're not going to waste the tax base, time, or money. That's, that's pretty much what I have. I don't know if Tom has anything else to.
I'd like to add, Tom. Our next meeting is posted for, I'm looking at the calendar, April fourteenth.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. For some reason, I thought it was tomorrow.
There's a couple of members that can't meet any other day than Wednesday, and so we're. You have a meeting, then we have a meeting, and we've been trying to work that way. And anybody who shows up would be welcome. We had a pretty good turnout of people in terms of. Watching the meeting and even had some pretty good comments, so. Boy, I'll tell you, it's working like a fine oiled clock.
Yep, it is.
We need those articles? Or do we have them somewhere? You mentioned articles for the school.
We, we sent you a letter requesting. You to add to the warrant. To do those fixes that we talked about in that last meeting, Bernie, I think you were there. We had a discussion about. Just trying to take care of the air handling system and the patches in the roof, in particular, because if we want to start putting people in. To the school, we thought that we ought to at least take care of some of the minor repairs.
Can you send that to Bernie and I, please?
I sure can. Yeah, I'll make sure that that gets to you guys directly.
Just because we need to do, we need to do an article and get it on this agenda, you know what I mean, like. As soon as we can start compiling this, we may have it, but I don't know. Again, I'm, I'm kind of like in the dark right now about what's happening. How much of this, we're gonna have to actually do ourself and. Move forward from there, so.
I'd just like to add, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was the feeling of the committee that. Buildings, i.e. are the responsibility of the town, i.e. responsibility of the selectmen. So we felt that it would be you guys that would do the leg, leg running in terms of cost to repair the roof. And cost to put air handling and, and writing the articles. We felt that that was the proper way to go.
Okay, well, I've written articles before when I was on the finance committee, so if you want some. Please send me some numbers and some ideas on how you think they should be written, and I'll put them together the way it sounds. Right, and then I'll run it by you again, but we need to do this soon because I want to have these numbers ready by my next Wednesday.
There you go.
But I appreciate that, but I don't, I was the feeling of the committee. That it was the town's responsibility to get the numbers and. Write it into the articles.
Right, right.
Tell us what you're looking, just if you can tell us like what you're looking for. Then we can play around with the number. We can figure out like what to do. I had instructed Kevin. To get as much as we could through this pandemic, the CARES Act. Because there's a, there's a, there's a part of money out there that we potentially could tap into. I'm not sure how to do that, and when somebody comes in. In the last five days trying to put together this, it might not work as anticipated.
Right.
And that's why we hire the town administrator or CAO, whatever it is, and. We need to have these people in place to do their job. Right now, like I said, you. You are here earlier, so you experienced what I did, and hopefully it's not. Like, we gotta pick up pieces here, but if that's what we gotta do, that's what we gotta do. Going from there. So the last thing that I'd like to do, Gare, is, is have some conversation, discussion with Karen. And we need to, and I'd like to address this as quickly as possible. How do we have the election to replace the selectman?
I've got to make a call tomorrow to the Secretary of State's office. All I know is we, this past week, another town clerk had an issue. And their issue was that they had two select board spots open on their election. But only one person got voted. There was just nobody else ran and nobody wrote in a name. So they were still short, a select. At that point, the Secretary of State's office said they could appoint somebody because it was a failure to elect. But the opposite happens when somebody resigns. When a selectman resigns, they have to be replaced by a vote. You can never appoint somebody. Yes, you can run your board short, but you have to run an election. And I'm not sure, because the nomination date was closed already, was March twenty fifth. So I have to find out what, if we can put another spot on the ballot for a selectman. And of course, there's no name there. So I don't know if we can run just an empty spot and somebody will write in names. I gotta find out.
Well, okay. Can, you think you might know tomorrow?
I don't know if I'll get a response by tomorrow, but I can try, Bernie. I don't like to do.
Well, the reason why I ask, and it would be. Maybe a little bit irregular, but I think it's within the. The scope of the rules is, myself and Gare had a meeting tomorrow night with the finance committee. It's a posted meeting. That we're meeting, so I think we could address that issue. If there's something that we need to do, but I'd like to work on it sooner than later. And quite frankly, I know some people might disagree with me, but I think if we. If we had to do a town election and have another special election the week after. Because we missed a deadline or two weeks or three, you know, I would say let's just move on and, and get the spot filled.
I agree. I think we should get the spot filled, and I'm crossing my fingers that we can do something with the election, since the warrant. The election warrant isn't already posted, but I don't know. And the other thing that I had my hand raised for is that. We're gonna try real hard to get the air handlers, fire station, whatever you need to do for this annual town meeting. But don't panic, because we can have a special town meeting in June and address anything that you didn't get figures for, or whatever. We've done that before many, many times, so don't anybody panic about something that doesn't get addressed on May third.
We're gonna figure it out. For everybody listening, we're gonna figure it out. It's gonna take some time probably to get everything together, but. We're still gonna be here. We're gonna be fine in six months from now.
If I can just add, on the town website, there's not a selectmen's meeting posted for tomorrow night. On the town website. I don't know about on the board.
It's out on the board. I'll have to check it tomorrow. I can add it to the website. My flagget is being late and being entered. I'm sorry, I've had a lot of stuff going on for us in a while, so I have an.
That's okay. I think we're covered if it's posted at town hall.
Yeah, outside of town hall.
My understanding is it's a courtesy to do it on the website. Is that the requirement is that it's posted at the town hall.
Okay, the link for the meeting is on the finance board anyway, so.
Okay, and we're not gonna get carried away trying to have a full select meeting at the finance committee meeting, but if there was something that we needed to address. Because Karen can find the information or something tomorrow, then obviously, we do that because we think it's in the best interest of the town.
Correct.
So. Okay, anything else, Gare?
No, a couple people, Linda still has her hand up.
Linda?
Sorry. Karen, how hard is it to change the town meeting date?
Well, with the COVID, there's some, there's some acts out there that you can change the date. But I'd have to look at that. It just takes a vote, I believe, but I don't know the timeframe that we're under right now, but I'm mad, I think it can be changed, Bernie.
Yeah.
You can put it off.
Can you ask about that tomorrow too, if you get ahold of somebody?
Yeah, I can look up the special act and then I can find out.
I did read that too, that you could change it because of COVID.
Yeah, and that is true.
Thank you.
Well, that that might be helpful, we might need. We might need to think about something like that, Ruth still had her hand up?
Yeah, okay, before you go, I just, I thought. I would mention that since your chairman resigned, you probably should reorganize so that you're not. Doing a co-chair thing, you might as well just reorganize now.
I'm fine with. Bernie, you want to be chair?
Well, somebody needs to be the chair, either you or I, so whatever you think is best, Gare.
Well, you certainly know this position far better than I do, and I'm not that comfortable with it yet being the chair, so I don't mind if you take the position.
Okay, well, make the make the motion and we'll, someone needs to be the chair, right?
Yeah.
You you make an emotion that I'm the chair, you're the vice chair?
Let me make the motion that Bernie Mallowan be the chair of the select board.
Okay, I'm going to second it because there's nobody else here to do it, so by roll call vote, Bernie will be the. Be the chair and. Gare will be the vice chair.
Correct.
Roll call vote, Mallowan, aye.
Fan dry, right, yeah.
And now we need, we need a clerk. Well, we'll we'll work on that, okay, so so that's it. I don't see anything else, so I guess we can close the meeting and hopefully the next one goes a little smoother and we get all these things. hashed out, so.
Now, when's the next, when's the next one going to be, do we do it a week from now or do we wait for two weeks again?
Yeah, no. I I'm thinking in two weeks is the week to close the warrant, correct?
Yeah, so let's meet before that, I think next. The fourteenth would be a good.
Okay, that's fine, let's meet the the fourteenth. Seven o'clock, if we can't, if we don't have a. Past host, we'll see if we can get Tim to, oh, he's going to be gone, isn't he?
Yeah, I won't be able to host it from the bottom of the Grand Canyon. Also, the school education, they're meeting at seven o'clock on the fourteenth also.
Yeah.
Do Tuesday then?
It it's up to you, I'm okay on Tuesday if that works, where's that going to? Mess up somebody else?
Zoning Board of Appeals has a meeting on the thirteenth.
Yeah, there's no business to come before it, no appeals.
Okay, four thirteen. At seven P M, we got, we got to figure out how we're going to do this thing with the hosting. Is there somebody else that knows how to do it?
Yes, Brian Mason. Just volunteered.
Brian Mason just volunteered?
Is he here?
Yeah, Brian Mason's here, I can, I can host the meeting.
You can? Well, that that'll be great. Okay, and while I have Brian here. We we're going to have you do that hosting meeting. But while you're here, there were some articles for the capital improvement?
Yeah.
Was there, because because I don't know what what went on. With those meetings. Was there some equipment that was going to be sold?
Nothing this year, there was only a section of stuff, the stuff that was sold in prior years, yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking because if there was something, I wanted to go back to how we did it before about putting the money back into the fund.
Nope, the only vehicle would be the police department was going to retain their vehicle for non-emergency use, so.
Okay, so then it's a non-issue. We'll go from there, okay, motion to adjourn?
One, one second, so in terms of hosting, I didn't create the meeting. So unless I create a new one, unless somebody opens the meeting and makes me.
Do you know how to create the meeting? Brian?
I could create it upon my own personal business account, yes. But I can't create it on the town's account, so.
You you you.
I I've been using. My account for the conservation, so, I mean, Tom Douse just raised his hand up, maybe he has. Something that he can get into it. Yep, so Rick Deegan, the chair of that. Education Option Committee actually has the password. For the town Zoom. Because he was running those meetings, I think he would be able to help you guys out with that. He I I, he might not be listening in. But I'll make sure he gets that message and reaches out to you guys and he can, he can help you out, so that's the town Zoom. And he can either help moderate that meeting or I'll help moderate that meeting if Brian Mason can.
Okay, you feel, you feel comfortable doing it, Brian?
Yeah, no, I'm fine if I just have the login credentials, I can't.
Okay.
I can't get into the meeting without them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so Tom, please reach out to Brian with that information.
Yep, we'll we'll get that coordinated.
Okay, good.
Okay, in the next couple of days so that he has plenty of time. You you know, realizing like what what needs to be done and.
If we're having a meeting on Tuesday, that needs to be posted on Friday.
Yeah, I need the numbers to post with the agenda. Okay? So Tom, you'll get this stuff too, Brian?
And 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 to Bernie, because he needs those numbers.
Correct.
And Bernie, somebody's going to get it to me so I can put it on the website.
I will get it to you like, just like I do the other ones, okay?
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, and. I think. Rick had his hand up again.
Yeah, I just want to add, Richard Deegan is, Rick Deegan is on on Zoom, he's on the meeting right now, he's just on a different page.
I I've asked him to unmute several times and I haven't got any response. Yeah, he's, he's doing two meetings at once and he's participating in another meeting, but he's listening.
Hey, we we need a guy like him. We need a guy like him to help us out here, he can do two meetings at the same time? So so anyway. So Tom, Tom, get your nomination papers ready. Okay?
You got it.
Let me know, let me know when you need a signature, so. We can get moving, okay?
You got it.
Gare, motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion, see you in none, roll call vote, Mallowan, aye.
Fan dry, aye.
Okay, we're closed, thanks, guys.
Thank you.